Morning, everyone. Calling the 10:00 AM Committee on Transportation to order here at the Hawaii State Capitol in room 430. It is 10:05 AM and we're going to convene the 10:00 AM agenda. We also have a 10:30 AM agenda to follow that is solely for decision making and we will do that after we finish this first agenda. Not much has changed. As you folks know, same thing, just if you can abide by the two-minute time limit, may have to institute a time limit depending on how testimony goes. The biggest thing that I just want to ask folks is just to be mindful that the same time that member testimony is available at 5:00 PM the day before is the same time public testimony is available to you folks as well. And so with that, we will get our hearing underway. First item on the agenda is HB 263 relating to vehicle weight taxes. It creates an exemption to the vehicle weight tax for full-time college students. Vice Chair for testimony.
Department of Transportation in opposition.
Thank you.
Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments on Zoom?
Not here.
Johnny May L. Perry, individual in opposition. Gary Mobley, individual in opposition. Is there anyone else in person or on Zoom who would like to testify on the measure before us?
Okay, members, any questions relating to HB 263? Seeing the next measure, HB 135 relating to land authorizes the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purchase of the real property located at 64-486 Kamakamea Highway on the north shore of Oahu. Vice Chair for testimony.
Department of Transportation in support.
Thank you.
And Jaclyn Le now, individual in support. Is there anyone else in person or on Zoom who would like to testify?
Thank you. Members, any questions? Seeing the next measure, HB 860 relating to liability specifies that the state or county that repairs or maintains a street of which ownership or jurisdiction is in dispute between the state and county shall be immune from liability for personal injuries or property damage arising out of the repair or maintenance of that street. Deems that maintenance of a street shall not confer ownership or jurisdiction over such street if ownership or jurisdiction over the street is in dispute between the state and the county. Vice Chair for testimony.
Department of Transportation in support. And DLNR with comments? DLNR again, Russell Tsuji with comments. City and County of Honolulu in support. Hawaii Association for Justice in opposition.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Evan Oi, on behalf of the Hawaii Association for Justice. You have our written testimony, but we did just want to highlight our opposition to this measure which grants overbroad immunity for the maintenance of these roads in Limbo, which the bill discusses. You know, essentially, the language is too broad and the immunity for liability from personal injuries, property damage, which, you know, could come from unsafe workmanship on these roads in Limbo, would be essentially exempt and there wouldn't have any form of recourse in those instances. So, for example, if a worker negligently forgets to remove excess repair materials from a road and your car is damaged, there would be immunity and you wouldn't be able to seek remedy in those instances. So that's just one example and we're concerned that this may also bleed into the personal injury side as well. So for those reasons, we respectfully oppose this measure.
Thank you.
Georgette Yandel, individual in opposition. Is there anyone else in person or on Zoom who would like to testify?
Thank you. Members, questions? Okay, moving on to the next measure, HB 996 relating to, oh, sorry, we did that. Oh, we didn't. Okay, sorry, similar bills. HB 996 relating to abolishing of joint and several liability for government entities and highway-related civil actions. Amend Section 663-10.5 and 663-10.9, HRS to abolish joint several liability for government entities and claims and cases relating to maintenance and design of highways under Chapter 663 HRS. So that government entities will be liable for any percentage share of damages actually attributable to them. Vice Chair for testimony.
Attorney General in support.
Good morning, Chair and committee members. My name is Amanda Weston. I'm with the Deputy Attorney General's Office, I'm sorry, with the Attorney General's Office. HRS 663-10.5 should be amended to its original form. The state is held responsible for its proportionate share of liability in other tort cases and it should be the same in cases involving maintenance and design of highways. In numerous cases since this statute was amended, the state has had to pay far more than its proportionate share of liability, sometimes millions of dollars. As a result, the taxpayers pay for the reckless actions of others, including drunk drivers. And that money would be far better spent on improvement of highways. I'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hawaii Association for Justice in opposition.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Evan Oi, again, on behalf of the Hawaii Association for Justice. You know, we respectfully oppose this measure. You know, HB 996 seeks to reduce government's responsibility to safely design and maintain our highways. This is bad public policy because providing safe highways is a core government function that the government has exclusive control over, which our residents touch and interact with on a daily basis. You know, under current law, government is only subject to joint and several liability for highway design and maintenance if it's 25% to 99% at fault or if it had reasonable notice. You know, so in these instances, you know, public welfare depends on, you know, diligence in repairing and maintaining these roads. And we're concerned that this, you know, this abolishment of joint and several liability would remove that accountability for the government in these instances. And also, we did want to highlight, you know, case law as well as legislative history. I think in 2006, the legislature specifically reaffirmed and maintained joint and several liability for highway maintenance because of the importance that it has and the control that it has over, you know, design and maintenance. So, you know, for these reasons, we respectfully oppose this measure and will be available for any questions.
Thank you.
Anyone else in person or on Zoom that would like to testify?
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Tammy Lee, Department of Transportation. I think we submitted testimony late, but we support this measure and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you.
Anyone else in person or on Zoom?
Okay, members, any questions? Okay, move on to the next measure, HB 1167, making an emergency appropriation. Department of Transportation makes an emergency appropriation out of the state highway fund to provide funds for fiscal year 2425 for the Department of Transportation to enforce the motor carrier law. Vice Chair for testimony.
Department of Transportation in support.
Thank you.
Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization in support. And Georgette Yandel, individual in support. Anyone else in person or on Zoom who would like to testify?
Thank you. Members, any questions? I will just disclose the same thing I did on the previous hearing, that I do chair the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization Policy Board, but I do not direct them on policies to support or oppose in testimony. So, okay, moving on to the next measure, HB 1259, related to transportation. Excuse me, specifies that engineering studies are to be required or considered when reducing the maximum speed limit within 10 miles per hour or the current speed limit for that road. Vice Chair for testimony.
I'm sorry. I think I read the, sorry, I read the wrong testimony for the last bill. As for this one, Department of Transportation in support. Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization in support. And Georgette Yandel, individual in support. Anyone else in person or on Zoom who would like to testify?
Thank you. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing that the OMPO testimony was for this measure, I will repeat the same thing that I said prior and have it applicable to this. Okay, HB 1156, related to special facility revenue bonds. Amend Section 266, stack 52 HRS, increase the total principal amount of special facility revenue bonds that may be issued by the Department of Transportation for harbor improvements. Vice Chair for testimony.
Department of Transportation in support.
Aloha Chair, Dre Kali, the Deputy Director of Transportation for Harbors. This is one of the bills that are in our package and basically the reason we need this bill is because a lot of the projects that would use this provision in law are a lot more expensive than they were when that ceiling was set in the 90s. And so we're just seeking the ceiling to be increased.
Thank you.
Anyone else in person or on Zoom who would like to testify?
Thank you. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing that, move on to the next measure, HB 960, related to transportation, increases the maximum value of. Sorry, really increases the maximum value of a capital advancement contract with that may be executed by Department of Transportation without legislative approval. Repeals the requirement for Department of Transportation to obtain the legislative approval through concurrent resolution for the capital advancement contracts greater than $2 million. Increases the total aggregate value of capital advancement contracts that DOT may enter into fiscal year establishes certain reporting requirements related to capital advancement contracts. Vice Chair for testimony.
Department of Transportation in support.
Aloha Chair and Vice Chair, Dre Kali again for DOT. This bill is very similar to a bill that we also included in the Governor's package. The primary difference between this bill and the next one that you are about to hear on the agenda is that there are no ceilings for the maximum value of a capital advancement contract. And so we, in our testimony, we explained that a ceiling of at least $5 million would be helpful. But since there are no blanks, we just offer that input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Young Brothers in support.
Thank you.
The Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii. The Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii in Support. Anyone else in person or on Zoom who would like to testify?
Thank you. Members, any questions? Seeing now, move to the next measure HB 1157, related to capital events and contracts, amend section 266-19.5, section D, HRS, for the purpose of increasing the cap for contract value of any one capital advancement contract, and the cap for the total aggregate value of the CACs in a fiscal year entered by the Department of Transportation with private parties for harbor improvements. Adds reporting requirements for the department. Vice Chair for Testimony.
Department of Transportation and Support.
Aloha Chair and Vice Chair, Dre Kuleli, again. We stand in strong support of this measure, and as we previously testified, that ceiling of $5 million would be incredibly helpful for our projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Young Brothers in Support.
Chris Nakagawa, Young Brothers, again, strong support.
Thank you.
Anyone else in person or on Zoom who would like to testify?
Thank you. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing that, move on to the next measure HB 142, relating to motor carriers, exempts nonprofit community-based organizations providing transportation services for motor care regulations under certain circumstances. Vice Chair for Testimony.
Public Utilities Commission offering comments.
Thank you.
County of Kauai in Support. The Hanalei Initiative in Support on Zoom.
Hi, my name is Joel Guy, Executive Director of the Hanalei Initiative. Thank you, Chair Darius, Members of the Committee. We do, we did some testimony, and we are here in strong support.
Thank you.
Hui Makainana Omakana in Support on Zoom.
Chipper said he's in another hearing, and he's running too late, so he won't make it.
No worries. We have his written testimony too, if anything.
Okay, Hawaii Transportation Association offering comments.
Okay.
Hermina Marita, Individual in Support on Zoom. And DLNR State Parks offering comments.
Good morning. We apologize for the late testimony. Kurt Cottrell, Minister of State Parks, we offer comments, and we defer to the PUC in terms of its application. You're going to answer any questions.
Thank you for your testimony. We received it as well, Kurt. Thank you.
Anyone else in person or on Zoom who would like to testify?
Thank you. Members, any questions? Okay, move on to the next measure HB 914, relating to water carriers, establishes a water carrier inflationary cost index mechanism, authorizes the PUC to grant exemptions to any water carrier from any requirement under the Hawaii Water Carrier Act, defines automatic adjustment mechanisms. Vice Chair for Testimony.
ECCA Division of Consumer Advocacy offering comments.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members, Mickey Knox for the Department of Consumer Advocacy. You have our written testimony. I just wanted to emphasize one point. The inflationary cost adjustment mechanism, that is currently a live issue in an ongoing rate case.
Thank you.
Available for any questions.
Appreciate it.
Public Utilities Commission with comments.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the House Committee on Transportation. My name is Andrew Cabe. I'm here on behalf of the Public Utilities Commission. I stand on the Public Utilities Commission's comments on HB 914, and available for any questions the committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Department of Transportation and Support.
Thank you.
County of Kauai in Support. Mattson Navigation Company in Support. Young Brothers in Support.
Morning. Chris Nakagawa, again. We have Young Brothers. Just wanted to emphasize, I stand on my strong testimony and support. Just want to emphasize that we think that this, this bill would be a great resolution for both, not only the water carriers, but also to, for the customers itself. It's a, it's a great resolution that we think that would be good for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hawaii Harbors Users Group in Support. And Maui Oil Company in Support. Anyone else in person or on Zoom who would like to testify on HB 914?
Thank you. Members, any questions? Okay, move on to our next measure HB 486, related to transportation, prohibits operation of electric bicycles on highways, street roadways, or any designated area for motor vehicles, prohibits unsafe operations of electric bicycle, prohibits the move of a manufacturer factory-installed speed-limiting device from an electric bicycle, and requires the Department of Transportation to develop a traffic safety education program and public awareness campaign with appropriation of funds. Vice Chair for Testimony.
Department of Transportation offering comments.
Thank you.
Hawaii Bicycling League in Opposition.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. You have our written testimony before you. Just want to emphasize that the issue of electric bicycles is very much a cost of living issue in addition to being about safety, and it's about, bicycles offer individuals and family affordable transportation options, so would like you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moped Doctors Inc. in Opposition on Zoom. Maza Christos Mechuria, Individual in Opposition. Kyle Kolamona Nakatsuka, Individual in Opposition. John Rogers, Individual in Opposition. Georgette Yandel, Individual in Opposition. And Don Ballaron, Individual in Support. We also have Robert Sato with comments. Anyone else in person or on Zoom who would like to testify?
Thank you. Members, any questions? Okay, moving on to our next measure HB 435, related to electric bicycles, amends the definition of electric bicycles, subjects to various state laws, and classifies electric bicycles by top assisted speed, establishes additional regulations for registration and use of e-bikes, sorry, establishes and additional regulations for the registration and use of electric bicycles, increases the minimum age to operate an electric bicycle. Vice Chair for Testimony.
Department of Transportation and Support.
Thank you.
Hawaii Bicycling League in Support.
Boardo Hernandez, Hawaii Bicycling League, we stand on our testimony in support with comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have Samantha Lara, Individual in Opposition. And we have six individuals in support and one with comments. Anyone else in person or on Zoom who would like to testify?
Thank you. Members, any questions? Okay, moving on to our last measure for the 10:00 AM agenda here on the House Committee on Transportation. Just clarifying that there is a 10:30 agenda, but that's just solely for decision-making, and that's separate from our 10:00 AM agenda. Okay, HB 958, related to transportation, requires all bicycles equipped with motors to be operated only, with all wheels on the grounds at all times, with certain exemptions prohibit certain actions while operating a bicycle equipped with a motor, defines electric bicycle in place of low-speed electric bicycle, defines electric, electric mobility device, and requires the same regulations as electric foot scooters apply to electric mobility devices, authorizes a person to ride electric bicycle on a sidewalk at a speed not exceeding 10 miles per hour, prohibits a person from operating a bicycle or electric foot scooter under their age of 18 without a helmet, repeals the requirement that moped drivers use bicycle lanes, and substitutes the word for motor motorcycle with the word motor scooter, appropriates funds for a coordinated education campaign on electric mobility devices. Vice Chair for Testimony.
City and County of Honolulu DTS in Support. Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam in Support. Hawaii Bicycling League in Support.
Chair, Vice Chair, we stand in support of this measure with comments. We, again, emphasize the importance of economics and affordability for individuals and families in their transportation options. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moped Doctors in Opposition on Zoom. And Georgette Yandel, Individual in Support. Anyone else in person or online who would like to testify?
I'd like to testify. Do you hear me?
Thank you. Please say your name.
My name is Robert Sato. Actually, I don't know, some kind of glitch in my technical stuff, so my camera doesn't appear to be working, but my full name is Manabo Robert Sato, and I oppose the measure along with our company. Actually, I represent Moped Doctors, and for some glitch, I got in there, and my full name is Robert Manabo Robert Sato. So, I'm actually representing Moped Doctors. I signed on, and I have multiple bills to testify on, but basically, we oppose this measure because of the restrictive, restrictive measures in some areas can affect the moped industry, and we've already suffered a lot of losses in terms of our ability to, actually, I'm Manabo Sato. I'm the Vice President and co-founder of Moped Doctors, which is a local moped and sales shop for the last 15 years. We do sales and repairs, and we've seen these kind of laws go at the moped industry, and we have gone with them and rolled with it, but financially, it's cost us a lot, and a lot of moped shops have been put out of business in the last few years since. The safety system and other systems have been organized. These other measures that are targeting electric bicycles appear to have good intent, but there may be some desire to re-study it, and we think that the electric bicycle community should actually be part of it. If they're not here representing themselves, maybe I'm speaking on their behalf, but we oppose this bill because we think there should be more studies done before we go through with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in person or online who would like to testify on HB 958?
Okay, seeing no further testimony on our 10:00 AM agenda, we're going to recess.
Question?
Oh, sorry. The question might.
The Honolulu Department of Transportation Services is not here. Yeah. In that case, I have a question for the Honolulu Bicycling League.
Yes.
So, the bill, as I read it, would classify anything over 750 watts would be outside of the classification of a bicycle.
Except for a moped or a motorcycle.
Okay, so I guess the question is, if you could maybe just elaborate to your understanding, like how the bill would impact, say, like, an electric moped or motorcycle that's above 750 watts?
So, we believe that if it's over 750 watts, it should not be classified as a bicycle whatsoever, and it should be, it's considered out of class and not part of any bicycle definition.
Which seems fair, but would it still be allowed to use city streets? There's nothing in the bill that would prohibit it from using public roadways, right? If it is classified as, say, an electric.
If it's classified as a moped or a motorcycle, then it's, it's regulated under those statutes.
Okay, we, we got testimony which one of the lines said that it would prohibit electric, let me see what it said. Sorry, one second here.
Hi, if I can chime in.
Sorry, hold on.
I just wanted to say.
Sorry, please wait.
Yeah, so just to clarify, so, so to your understanding, though, anything over 750 watts would be classified as a moped and regulate under moped statutes and not prohibited in any way from city streets? Just not, just not classified as a bicycle?
No. If it's a moped, it falls under moped regulation. If it's a motorcycle, it falls under, but some of these devices that we've seen that are confusing the issue, which is why we're in support of a three-tier classification system, is that some are incredibly more powerful and exceed 5,000 watts even of power, and are not, should not be legal and are not legal to be operated on any roadways, only private property. And these bikes, we see them all over town and all across the island. They're masquerading as e-bikes, and they're vastly more powerful, and these are causing a lot of the injuries, but the media is sort of reports them as e-bikes. So, that's why we want to make it out of class distinction.
Okay, no, and that makes total sense to me. I guess my concern is just making sure that something that is otherwise equivalent to a motorcycle, just is electric, would be classified as a motorcycle and allowed to operate as a motorcycle does, and that we're not closing the door on that.
Correct.
So, this bill, okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Okay, we're going to recess. We're going to recess.
Convening the 10 a.m. agenda, sorry, the 10 a.m. committee on transportation for decision-making. I want to go through every measure on the agenda and just walk you folks through on what we are doing. So if you, members, if you can take your attention to HB 263 relating to vehicle weight taxes. For this measure, my recommendation is that we're going to defer. I did appreciate the introducer's intent for the measure and acknowledge that sometimes our students are the ones that are facing challenges for cost of living and attendance. But I'm going to reference the Department of Transportation testimony exempting one class or group creates an unfair burden to others because in the same scope, I would then try to also exempt our furthest commuters on the island of Oahu from this as well. But understanding that when you do blanket exemptions on classes of people, they may fall into one class, but not necessarily need the benefit. So to that note, I did want to note that potentially a tax credit may be the more appropriate solution for the intent on the measure to be pursued further. And I did let the introducer know. So we'll be deferring HB 263. Next measure, HB 135 relating to land. We're going to adopt the HD1 and we're going to defect the effective date to July 1, 3000. Reduce some technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. The bill contains a blank appropriation amount that I will leave. I will note in the committee report that the need for an appropriation will be best determined by the Finance Committee and Department of Transportation for further discussion. Members, comments, questions, or concerns?
Okay. Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Voting on HB 135, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and vice chair vote aye. Representative Cochran, excused. Representative Ebslin?
Aye.
Representative Kitagawa?
Aye.
Representative Lachika?
Aye.
Representative Miyake?
Aye.
Representative Muraoka?
Aye.
Representative Perrick?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Okay. Moving on to the next measure, HB 860 relating to liability. We're going to adopt the HD1, defect the effective date July 1, 3000. We'll do some technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style. I do want to cite the testimony of opposition and understanding, but I will go back to what Department of Transportation, their position of support. And I think many members on this committee can note that because the fear of liability, we've also had the reality of dilapidation on some of our private roadways, especially... I'll speak for me and Rep. Muraoka on West Side of Oahu where these roads in Limbo really could benefit from just someone wanting to do the good work, but nobody wants to for liability insurance purposes. So I appreciate the testimony citing the opposition, but I will follow the author's intent and good purpose that I think we all can get behind. All right. Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 860, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and vice chair vote aye, noting the excused absence of Representative Cochran for all remaining measures on this agenda. Are there any other, are there any members voting no? Any with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Okay. Moving on to the next measure, HB 996. Similar, but not, I do want to defer this measure and I'm going to cite some things. To 2006, we've had a longstanding public policy for our government to ensure safe roads given its role in highway design and maintenance. And this responsibility remains just as critical today. When I think of us trying to do a broad waiver on some things, it may be exempting us from maintenance and liability that the state is ultimately due process for as well, something we owe to our taxpayers. These road conditions, I think, are prevalent and a standard set across by all departments. And I follow the lead of Department of Transportation and believe they are doing everything that they can for our state roadways to maintain and hold these areas. And I encourage members or committee members, if there's something in the state's purview under the Department of Transportation to address, to please bring that up directly with them as they've been great partners in ensuring the stability and responsibility and maintenance of our roadways. So as long as we continue to keep our roadways safe, which I think we are doing, I don't believe this measure is necessary. So I will be deferring HB 996. Next measure, committee members, HB 1167, make any emergency appropriations Department of Transportation. We're going to adopt the HD1. We're going to defect the effective date to July 1, 3000. We'll do tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. The appropriation amount is blank and I'll include the originally requested amount in the committee report for the Finance Committee's reference and decision-making. Members, questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 1167, are there any members voting no? Any with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. HB 1259 relating to transportation. Members, we're going to adopt the HD1. We're going to defect the effective date to July 1, 3000. We're going to do technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. Questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Voting on HB 1259, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any members voting no? Any with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Members, HB 1156 relating to special facility revenue bonds. We're going to adopt the HD1. We're going to defect the effective date July 1, 3000. We're going to leave the appropriation amount blank, including the committee report, the requested amount and reference for the Finance Committee's decision-making. Members, questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 1156, are there any members voting no? Any with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Members, HB 960 relating to transportation. We're going to adopt the HD1. I want to note the existing cap of $2 million for contract and aggregate limit of $5 million per party has restricted the scope of Department of Transportation for the type and number of projects that can be undertaken under a capital advancement contract. If we were able to increase these limits to at least $5 million per contract and $20 million in total, this will give DOT the opportunity to enhance port facility improvements more effectively and efficiently. I want to note that Department of Transportation, specifically the Harbors Division, has their own operating cost and budget that's not subject to the same legislative budgets that we approve. They have a special fund specifically for this to allow them of greater flexibility to stay intent of the measure. Rising project costs and whatnot would allow the higher caps to actually deliver more efficient and intentional upgrades at our ports and facilities. But I will include the requested amounts in the committee report for the Finance Committee's recommendation, and I will blank all fiscal references in the bill for further review. I will amend the reporting timeline to align with the fiscal year instead of the proposed reporting period of December 1st through November 30th. And I'm going to defect the effective date to July 1, 3000. And we will adopt technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. Members, questions, comments, concerns? Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 960, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any members voting no? Any with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Members, HB 1157 relating to capital advancement contracts. I'm going to defer this measure. I realize both measures are same intent, but to credit myself, I have much more scope under the bill that we proposed versus 1157. But we're trying to accomplish the same thing. So for that measure, I will defer HB 1157 due to similar scope and intent of HB 960, sorry, HB 960 for duplicative intent. Members, next measure, HB 1422, 1422 relating to motor carriers. We're going to adopt the HD1. We're going to defect the effective date to July 1, 3000. In this measure, we're going to note the PUC testimony in the committee report that the term nonprofit community-based organization may face challenges for the commission to define or qualify as a criteria for what constitutes community-based or not clearly established. Additionally, the commission would benefit from the clarification or definitions of these terms such as a county-approved plan and community stakeholders to ensure consistent interpretation and application. I think we can assume that we all know what the adopted county plans may be and whatnot, but I do want to give note to the PUC on what they are trying to accomplish so that there is no discrepancies in the intent of the bill. So I will note that in the committee report, just for clarity, in the next committee, the bill will be advanced for further discussion and refinement of these definitions, and I hope we can work to get those clarifications. Members, questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 1422, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any members voting no? Any with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next bill, HB 914 relating to water carriers. We're going to adopt the HD1. We'll defect the effective date to July 1, 3000. I want to note the PUC's recommended amendment on page line, on page one, that they are requesting to strike the word shall or replace it with may. I'm inclined to leave the bill as is with that language right now. I understand the PUC is seeking some flexibility, but the reason the measure is before us is because of some concerns happening at the PUC. I saw just note in the committee report that their recommended amendment is based on that, but I'm going to leave the language as is as the HD1. Members, questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 914, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any members voting no? Any with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Okay. The next three bills are all similar in scope. I definitely want to narrow some of it down so if you folks can be patient with me, and I will try to do my best. So first measure, HB 486 relating to transportation. We're going to adopt the HD1. We're going to do numerous technical amendments to fix the style and formatting of the measure. I'm going to defect the effective date to July 1, 3000. Noting that the bill has a blank appropriation, we're going to leave it as such for further discussions. I'm going to remove sections two and three and keep the, in the intent of the preamble language. And this vehicle will be for updating the public on what measures we are adopting here at the legislature for further definition of our electric bicycles and mobility devices. But also, I want to thank the author's intent for the prohibition on the removal of these governors onto these electric bikes. When you buy a vehicle in a certain way, it comes from the manufacturer because it's complicit in laws and safety as such. But when you go in to remove it and try to make the vehicle for not the intent, that's definitely where it becomes a dangerous thing for all roadgoers. So this intent for the vehicle in the measure, HB 486, is to have our public campaign language and also the prohibition on the removal for the speed-limiting devices. So with that, that's my recommendation. Members, questions, comments, concerns? Rep. Ebsen?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate the amendments you made to the bill and I appreciate the introducer's intent. I'll be voting with reservations. My only concern is that I think that in some instances, there can be value, possibly a safety value, in removing the speed-limiting device in that there is value in being able to go to the speed of traffic on an electric bike. I regularly commute on an electric bike. The most dangerous section of road that I do is crossing over McCully from King Street to go over the highway. You got to go the speed of traffic to merge across three lanes. And in that case, I could see value in having a speed governor removed. That said, again, appreciate the intent of the bill to increase safety and I appreciate the amendments you made.
Thank you, Rep. Ebsen. Members, any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 486, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any members voting no? Any with reservations?
With reservations.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Okay. Members, next bill, HB 486 relating to transportation, oh, sorry, HB 435 relating to electric bicycles. We're going to adopt the HD1. We're going to do some technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. We'll defect the effective date to July 1, 3000. On page two, and we delete lines four through eight, the bill contains a blank permanent registration fee amount for class three electric bicycles. I don't think we've had yet an idea what that could look like. I know in the county, they have $30, I believe, for mopeds. Definitely want to leave it blank for further discussion. I also want to require helmets for individuals under the age of 18. The prohibitions in this, in this bill and e-bikes for those, will apply it to those under the ages 15 to only class three e-bikes. And I want to explicitly allow general use for class one and two bicycles, as noted in the language. Also, adopt language related to e-mobility microdevices in 435 and 958, following similar standards as noted above. With this measure, I appreciate the author's intent because there was no other bill put forward this session regarding this, one, labeling of e-bikes in the classifications as we adopt them, but also, two, putting the burden of proof onto both the purchaser and seller of what laws exist on our books today and allowing the timeline for implementation so that eventually, when it's up to code and scope, that there should be no questions and ifs or buts on what the law follows. So I definitely want to highlight that the vehicle with this measure is to keep those languages regarding the labeling and disclosure at the point of sale. So thank you to the author for doing that. Members, questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 435, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Any members voting no? Any with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you so much. Okay, members, last measure for our 10 a.m. hearing. HB 958 relating to transportation. We're going to adopt the HD1. We're going to make technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. We're going to set the effective date to July 1, 3000. We're going to modify the e-bike restrictions to prohibit only class three e-bikes for individuals under 15. Same thing, allowing explicit use for class one and two use with no age restrictions. I understand... Sorry, let me go back. I want to thank everyone who worked on this bill through the amendments, the proposed amendments, the working group from the county that was facilitated. I think this issue has proliferated amongst all of our districts. I do want to acknowledge that Oahu probably faces a different challenge than our neighbor island folks. In the next hearing, I will try to address specific Oahu issues that impact statewide note. So this, this omnibus e-bike language was worked out of the language that was put forward by the working group so that now with the bill that was just adopted in the county of Honolulu, we can have consistency across the state as the other counties work to also implement this as well. Okay. So going back to that, I want to strike the language related to coordinated education campaign, electric mobility devices, as that's noted in the previous measure by the other introducer. In the committee report, I want to reference DTSS's testimony that the definition of electric micro mobility devices need to remain broad to encompass motorized devices and ensure inclusivity for these evolving technologies that have yet to come out. Also, I'm going to add language to define and regulate what a high-speed electric devices are or HSED. We're going to clarify that a vehicle resembling a bicycle but not equipped motors exceeding 750 watts and capable of speeds over 28 miles per hour do not qualify as a class one, two, or three e-bike and should be categorized as a high-speed electric device or out of class. We're going to explicitly prohibit HSEDs from public roadways, bike lanes, travel paths, and other designated areas, including streets, highways, sidewalks, and public bicycle paths. Otherwise noted as, or sorry, noted otherwise except, otherwise noted as already by law. So if these are already existing to acknowledge some of the concerns about motorcycles and mopeds, this would not be applicable if otherwise noted already by law. That was the amendment made on that. So I want to thank folks for helping me on that one. And we're going to define HSED as a two-wheeled electric device with a motor exceeding 750 watts and capable of speeds over 28 miles per hour, already not noted by law. I want to clarify e-bike regulations as electric bicycle with a motor output of having 750 watts or less as defined under the adopted language of class one, two, and three. And they may be operated in all areas where bicycles are permitted, including streets, highways, and designated bicycle paths. I do want to note that I think everything is comparable and okay. I do want to note that I think everything is comparable and okay, but I do want to add language that a class three e-bike, a class three e-bicycle, I want to explicitly prohibit on the use of sidewalks. We're also going to adopt the same language for requiring helmets for individuals under the age of eighteen and similar language regarding four three five of labeling and signage at the point of sale as outlined. We're also going to align the weight limit for micro mobility devices under the 75-pound threshold for electric foot scooters per DTS's testimony for consistency. I will also adopt, incorporate language from the previous bill into this bill so that just consistency and maintaining standards across both bills. I also want to note that HPD submitted late testimony or put amendments to me. There was one I do want to adopt. So on page two, section two, we have a line stating standing or kneeling on any seat, riding on the handlebars, or engaging in any other non-standing riding position. We will add language that non-standing or non-standard riding position as such. Regarding the electric micro mobility devices, we will keep the language as is, and I will ask HPD to submit further comment for the next committee to consider as some of their comments in the email they've sent, we adopted already. Okay, members, thank you for being patient with me on this one. Is there any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, vice chair for the vote, please.
Voting on HB nine fifty eight. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any members voting no? Any with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. We're going to adjourn the 10 a.m. hearing, and then I will gavel in for a 10:30 a.m. hearing for decision making. Morning, calling the committee, housing committee on, housing committee. Calling to organize the committee on transportation for decision making on our 10:30 a.m. agenda here in the Vaистe Capitol in room four thirty. We are doing decision making only on these previous measures that were considered on Tuesday, January 28, 2025 at 10 a.m. The following measures are HB seven zero eight and HB one eight four. I appreciate the testimony that came out on these measures, and I will note the same thing I said in the 10 a.m. hearing that what we are facing on Oahu is very much separate from what the neighbor island folks are facing. And I believe at the statewide level, we want to implement policy that is applicable to statewide, but I also think it would be an unfair position for me to blanket the same problems and concerns that we experience on the west side of Oahu to somewhere on the west side of Kauai. So I appreciate everyone's intent on trying to find some middle ground on the measure that we can still accomplish the intent without affecting everyone. So for HB seven zero eight, on our first measure, I'm going to adopt the HD one. I'm going to set the effective date to July first three thousand. We'll do tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. I'm going to remove the references to class one to, class one and two e-bikes, and I will only retain class three references in language by adopting the class three bike definitions as adopted and, as adopted and outlined in HB nine five eight. We're going to incorporate the relevant definition of what a class three e-bike is based on our HB nine five eight. The penalties and minimum insurance requirements, I'll leave blank for further discussion in subsequent committees to determine appropriate amounts. Department of Transportation has noted that there are other states that have adopted some of these requirements, but my intent is to only make it applicable to class three e-bikes as defined. I don't want to do the same blanket thing for class one and two as I understand they have different intents. But I also want to add that we're going to limit the requirement to apply, to make this applicable to only class three e-bikes as defined, and restricting applicability to counties with a population of 500,000 or more to really just look at and address the issues we're facing really on the island of Oahu. So that's my recommendation. Members, comments, concerns, questions? Chair Ebsen, let me, Rep. Ebsen.
Chair Keela, I appreciate the work that you did on this bill. I especially appreciate that you're narrowing it down significantly. I will still be voting no on it, and my concerns are based off the insurance commissioner saying that no bike insurance currently exists that they know of. The fact that, which was brought up in testimony, that mopeds don't need insurance. I think this would be an unfair burden for electric bicycles. That's not applied evenly across the board. And that, as I understand, which was brought up in testimony, that this would strip away personal injury protection from those that are hit by a car. I think if you are severely injured on an electric bike, that was because you got hit by a car. And I think liability should remain on the, on the driver of that car in those types of instances. That said, again, I appreciate all the work that you have done here for continued discussion on this point.
Thank you, and just to kind of add to what Rep. Ebsen is saying, I think we are trying to adopt new concepts and legislation at the Capitol all at the same time. And I think as we try to put forward classifications, language for sale, disclosure, a prohibition on governors and the public campaign, and adding on to potential things such as insurance and licensing, these are all new concepts, I think, that folks are still learning to adapt to and very much aware that this may be too new for the legislature to adopt. But I think acknowledging that there may be continued discussion, whether it's in the next committee or for the interim. But I do want to acknowledge and appreciate your sentiment. Members, any questions, comments, concerns? Vice chair for the vote, HB seven zero eight.
Voting on HB seven zero eight. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and vice chair vote aye. Representative Cochran, excused. Representative Ebslin.
No.
Representative Kitagawa.
Aye.
Representative Lachika.
Aye.
Representative Miyake.
Aye.
Representative Muraoka.
Aye.
Representative Perick.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Okay, next measure HB one eight four. Same thing, we're going to adopt the HD one, we'll do a, set the effective date July first three thousand. We'll do tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. The author's intent was to regulate all electric bicycles, especially low speed, but I want to remove any language relating to low-speed electric bicycles, and I'm going to limit the requirement of licensing to class three e-bikes. And the definition of a class three e-bike will adopt the language as outlined in HB nine five eight. The licensing requirement I'm going to make restricted and only applicable to class three e-bikes for individuals under fifteen and while, while allowing the unrestricted use of class one and two e-bikes, so making this requirement only for class three. Again, I appreciate folks' testimony regarding, just trying to make folks, make this as accessible as possible and not trying to put an undue burden onto any group or population. The next part, establish the age and licensing conditions. This will be specifically for class three e-bike operations. No person under the age of fifteen operated class three electric, class three electric bicycle unless they are at least 16 years of old and possess a valid driver's license, instruction permit, or provisional license at all times. I did adopt language straight from Honolulu Department of Transportation Services at the county for this licensing requirement. They're going, they will complete and print a state of age driver's license application specifically for a class two instruction permit. And I want to note that a type one license is for a moped, type two is motorcycle, and type three encompasses car and moped, but I'm going to exempt the applicant from the motorcycle written test. So when they're pursuing the class two instruction permit, they do not need to complete the motorcycle written test. I will keep the requirement that if they do not currently possess a class three license, they will just have to pass, take and pass general driver knowledge examination. This explicit, and I want to note that they're explicitly exempt from completing a road test requirement as understanding that some boat owners of a bicycle as such do not own a car, and I still don't want that to be a barrier. So this is the compromise, and I appreciate Hawaii Basicing League and Rep. Ebsen for working with me on it so that, again, it doesn't impact a broader class or group. And I'm going to limit this requirement that, again, that is only applicable to class three e-bikes as defined in our language, and this applicability is only to counties with a population of 500,000 or more. So this really would be just for the county of Oahu as, sorry, the county of Honolulu currently in its statute. So, members, with that, any questions, comments, or concerns? Rep. Ebsen.
Yeah, I just want to express my appreciation, Chair Keela, for your work on this. I, as you noted, did have pretty significant concerns around the driver's license requirement and the difficulty that, that somebody who didn't own a car would face in trying to get a driver's license, and I think that you really addressed and solved for that. And as, and somebody who commutes often with an electric bike, there is no reason that somebody on a class three bicycle should not understand the rules of the road and abide by those rules, and taking a written test, I think, would ensure that. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Members, any other questions, comments, concerns? Yeah, I've appreciated just working with folks on this measure so that we can just try to accomplish the intent but not impact other groups. So again, I appreciate everyone's flexibility and comments on the measure. So that, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on HB one eighty four. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any members of voting, noting the excused absence of Representative Cochran, are there any members voting no? Any with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. With that, members, we are adjourned.